Caller meeting to session. So we're here today for a two-part meeting to discuss the evaluation process. First of all, for our superintendent. And then the second half of the meeting, we'll be going into closed session to discuss a little bit further the mid-year evaluation. You know, this process is something that school boards all have to do. It was really wonderful for all of us to attend the training that we had in September on the evaluation process. I think we got a lot of good information about it. It was good for, I think, all of us to hear the same thing all at the same time. The process is something that I do want to go over, not specifically for our mid-year evaluation, but definitely for the summative evaluation. And summative is the year-long evaluation, which is something that we are required to do by state code. So I did send out a little chart ahead of time, kind of outlining how the meeting would follow through. And really, our goals for today, which I hope that we can accomplish, are going to be to talk about the process for the year-long evaluation and then eventually go into the closed session. So, the process for the mid-year started at sort of towards the end of November when Mr. Clanton and I met with Dr. Boone. We knew that we wanted to get some time on the calendar to start this process. A mid-year is not required, but it is highly suggested that we do something to give the superintendent feedback on any materials that the board has for items for improvement. I like to say glows and grows, strengths, accommodations. And so we wanted to give some time to everybody to get that process going. What we are evaluating her is what is in her contract. It's the seven domains. We were able to send out the evaluation that was provided last year so that you could have that to review. But it's basically just like a mid-year check-in. How are things going? These are some of the things that we see as a board. These are the things that we like. These are the things we think that you can improve upon. That's why we're having this process. Also, as a part of this process, it's a way for us to work through, as a new board, how we want to work through the end-of-year evaluation. Because not everything is going to be perfect and not everything is going to fall in place on the date that we set. But it's a good opportunity for us to go through this process now, literally knocking on February, so that we can do this in an appropriate manner for June, which is where we want to end up with as far as the end-of-year evaluation. So I appreciate everybody for coming in today. I know this is not typically a meeting day for us, but this is important work and I'm glad that we're all here to participate in that. Mr. Jordan, you had sent some questions earlier about today. I've kind of walked through a little bit of what this is and I'll get into a little bit further detail as we go into the year review. But certainly, the items that are pertaining to Dr. Boone, God bless you, herself, are confidential. She is our employee. And just like all employee matters, they are confidential. And so we're going to keep it that way. So, does anybody have any questions at this point in time? Because I'd like to go through and start discussing the process for the end-of-year evaluation during this time that we have. So, do we all have a copy of doctor, of the contract, of her contract? Okay. Within the contract, there are some details that are indicators of some things that the board will have to do. One of those indicators for evaluation are the seven domains as dictated by the State Department. I think we've all, we've all heard them in the training and we've looked at them a couple of times as we've done this evaluation. But there are other things that we can use in order to do that evaluation process. We've termed them as other indicators. And I would like to open up the discussion now to just start on items that the board would want to consider for additional indicators for the evaluation. That would be something that, you know, we would want to discuss as a board. And I guess let me just also add, Mr. Cloud and Dr. Boone, if there are any items that we start to discuss that you think need to be more within a closed setting material, please let me know and I don't mind to backtrack.
The only comment I have is that if you are looking to propose indicators beyond the seven that are part of the model guidance, that moves it into an area of contract negotiations.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then I would need to be represented for contract negotiations.
Okay. So I have a question then. So if we were to do the, use the accountability plan, then how, how would that be used as an indicator with what you've just said?
I don't think we would use the term indicator. The indicators have been established per state statute code. I think it would just be other things supporting within those different indicators. So I would just say that we don't use the term indicators. Those are the clearly defined as though what we, but we can identify other items that would help support in those various indicators.
And just clarifies, we evaluate the superintendent based on the performance standards, not the indicators itself, but those indicators that are in the, the tool that was provided to us and that we received training on, those are examples of indicators that we can use. We may, with collaboration with Dr. Boone, determine that there are other indicators or indicators that we may specifically want to have under that performance standard. But the performance standard itself is what we evaluate.
Right.
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 And what I hear Mr. Clanton saying is the documentation you may use in order to the evidence to support any type of finding as it relates to those seven performance standards. So to your original question about the accountability plan, the accountability plan primarily houses data that we will have discussed all throughout the year. So the plan itself is, again, I know it's under revision and having, because we all haven't seen the migration to the newer system, but the, the plan itself, as it has originally been designed, is a means of housing and collapsing the data around certain specific goals around student academic achievement, safe, secure schools, community engagement. And so I wouldn't, I would think that anything that's in the accountability plan is something that will have already been presented or demonstrated in another place. But it's evidence, not, not a standalone standard.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Ms. Camson.
The only thing I was going to say is, I think the accountability, I mean, the evaluation instrument is very comprehensive. What I'd like to request is that, is that we have the evidence piece, because the evidence piece both, on both sides, because, you know, I always had my teachers, I would say, if you think you're above proficient, just bring me the evidence. I'm open, I'm always open to discussing an evaluation, because a lot of times, your employee does things that are really great and takes you beyond proficient that you don't even know about. You know, maybe they presented at a conference or some other things. And so I just think that we need to be sure that, you know, we, we allow Dr. Boone to bring evidence in of things that she feels have gone beyond what maybe we would have had. And at the same time, we'll have the evidence of, you know, what, what we're doing as we score each of the, each of the domains. But I think that that option should always be open to anyone on our staff that we are, that we're evaluating, is that they always have the option to say, well, you gave me proficient here, but look what else I've done beyond the, proficient is the standard. Beyond the standard, I've gone beyond it and done this. Or that, that needs improvement or whatever the number, number two is. I feel that I really am proficient and here's my evidence of that. So I just want us to keep an open mind on both, as the evaluator, we need to have evidence, especially if we're looking at the student achievement, domain seven, we need to have evidence there ourselves. But the superintendent always, or anybody, I don't, not just the superintendent, I always, I spent the whole year, I had a folder, I dropped all the extra stuff I did in it, you know? So I got mine, I went in my exemplary. So, anyway. Just, just add that in.
Madam Chair. Eric James.
Okay. Mr. Jordan and then Mr. Clanton.
Yeah, I was just going to say that Dr. Boone has gone through mid-year evaluations and final evaluations since she's been here. Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Bassini and I have, have done those with her. Just going back to, for a moment when we attended the workshop, we did attend exercises they had for us. I didn't feel like we really had a chance as a team to participate in the group exercises at the workshop. But Ms. Bassini sent the, a couple of weeks ago, some of the slides from the workshop and what they recommended us do under making plans for the future. One was to examine your current evaluation model. So I think there's some benefit in having the board as a whole with Dr. Boone, just kind of be able to walk through and step through what we've done since her arrival. And it says, under that, what is the strength of your model? Is there an area that could be improved? If so, what and how? What elements need to be revised in order to align with revised VDOE guidelines? Note, be sure that, be sure their student academic progress is included. Letter D, what opportunities and challenges does the revision process provide? So I think following through those steps as a whole allows us to get familiarity with what's been done and then talk about, as this current board and team, you know, what holes or additions or adjustments we like to make. Then I think where we started, their step number two is review your process. So it recommends, what are the steps in our current evaluation process, which I think we're starting to have that conversation now? Do you have a clearly defined timeline for the process? If so, is there anything that needs to be changed? What types of documentation, which I think the conversation is now, do you require? Are any changes needed? What type of rating scale do you use? Will it need to be adjusted in order to match performance standards? So you get an opportunity to see what rating scale we used before and whether or not we want to make any adjustments to that. And then the third recommendation is establish a timeline for your work. Work backward from your implementation date to establish a timeline for revisions. Include specific work that needs to be done and identify the person or persons responsible for making the revision. So I just think if we would, as part of our process, perhaps review the slides that we were exposed to at the workshop, go through these next steps. And I think if we follow those recommendations, we may find that would give us a structured and inclusive process to get to where it is that we're trying to go rather than kind of just skip.
Well, I had one thing I was going to say here, which I am going to get to in a second, but I do have a question. So the slides, when did you all get those, or send them back out?
When did I send them to you?
Yeah.
Prior to the, prior to the meeting that we had.
I mean, July, January 15th.
We had that meeting to discuss it at that point.
Fourth, the day before.
Yeah, the day before on that one. So I had a discussion with Ms. Patty Pitts at the State Department, who essentially, I guess, is the guru when it comes to state evaluations. And essentially, what she said to us, oh, to me at that particular point, was that it's up to the board. And I think that VDOE, I mentioned the training there, and she says, you know, you can provide any guidelines, but at the end of the day, it really comes down to your board and getting it done. I think we've already established the fact that we're in six months, almost about to hit, two more days will be in February. So in a perfect world, the recommendations in there would probably be best. But we're not living in the perfect situation right now in timing. And I think that there's some things that we can glean from that and that we can implement at this particular point in the time that we've identified to do this today. So I appreciate those items and I think that we can definitely glean some things from there. The original thing that I did want to speak about, and my suggestion, was regarding the standard five, community and communications and the community relations piece. And I really liked, within the superintendent's evaluation, guidelines that they provided from the state, particularly on page 23 and 24, because I thought it was a very, as you were asked to evaluate the superintendent on their communications and the community relations. But that's kind of, it's kind of hard to do that because it's only in our own lens and perspective rather than actually having some data on it. And so one of the things that they provided in, as a sample, was actually a client survey, where you could actually send to parents, community leaders, public officials, and anyone other that we would identify. And there were 15 questions that were asked there. So it wasn't just the board, but then we were also getting, we were talking about from the community. And one of the things that I've been really pushing is about that community feedback and so forth. So I'm not quite sure if we've ever used that before, but I think that would be something I would really want to be able to, to look at, take a serious look at. And then the other piece of that is how you collect all those surveys in, then they also provide you with a survey summary form. How many surveys went out? Who did they go to in the different demographic groups and so forth? And then what the analysis was, bringing back. Now, it's not a total, and like we just said, it doesn't change the performance standards, but it does add to an actual, you know, when we're looking at it. So it's not just us saying, well, you know, I don't think you, I think you do awesome in the community relations, but then it may.
Yeah, I want to go next.
Okay. So that's, that's my thing on that one. I won't take too much time, but I thought that that would be a cool one. I thought, and it's, again, the other thing that was emphasized is that the entire, the only thing that's required is that we do a summative evaluation every year. How we get there is up to every school division. And I think they use the example of the Yorktown School Board, where they took items from that and they came up with their own. And what I would honestly like to see long-range is for the board to actually kind of put that as one of our task objectives, so that for future boards and whatever it may be, that we've kind of taken some time, worked with our clerk to establish what those guidelines are. I know that it changes with, you know, each superintendent, but then we at least have a framework that we can always say, here's our document for evaluation. We can look at it and then we can actually make changes from it. And one of the things, just building continuity, and that's a challenge I've had.
May I just respond if you would allow?
Yeah.
So I, he likes it when you yield, senority, not a spaniel. Just calling Curtis, she could have said no, which would have been fine. So I think everything you said is, I don't think I'm saying anything any different. What I received from the workshop was exactly that. And I've had opportunities in the past to also deal with Ms. Pitts on, on several things. The, I think we're saying some things similar, because that's, at least of my time on the board, we have done exactly that. Each board has sat down with the superintendent and worked on that process. So I don't have any, any issue with, with any of that. I was just simply saying that based upon the steps and recommendations that they suggested from the workshop, I just think it gives us a structured process for us to get to what you described.
And, and that structure is kind of what I tried to capture here. It's not being prescriptive, but it's a framework for which we can springboard this discussion. And it, and I did work it from back to June. And what it does is it says, you know, if we work it back to May, that we allow the superintendent to give us a self-assessment, to provide that, that work that she has done on the domains and anything else that we might want to put in as far as the, the other items, she presents that to us. Then the board is able to go back and reflect upon that, give our input, meet together as a unit, and then come back and have that discussion with her. And then from that point, formulate what that evaluation is. The only caveat that I wanted to put in there was to have a two-by-two meeting early on to discuss some of the academic data, which we didn't have at the time of the last evaluation. I, I really want to make sure that we get that piece. And, and I know that it's preliminary, but I think that that's important because it's 40% of that domain within the evaluation. And, and I personally do like the, the tool that the VDOE has, so I, I don't think that we should deviate from that tool, but that's my preference, so.
So, I, so in response to what you were saying, I, this is my first time going through this process and I don't, wouldn't like, I don't want to change the tool. I understand what you're talking about is going through that process, but I think that that should be for after the summative evaluation, so that we don't make, change our expectations on whatever's been already delivered to Dr. Boone as far as her evaluation.
Changing the tool.
Yeah. Well, I mean, to go through it, okay, then maybe I'm not understanding why we would go through it now. I, I don't, I don't want to, I just don't feel comfortable changing it just yet, or...
I just want to be clear. I wasn't suggesting that we change the tool. I was suggesting as a team, we go through the tool.
Okay.
And so that we're clear what's, what the tool is.
Oh, so you, so like we did at the workshop to do that again? Okay.
So when you say tool, are you referencing the domains? Is that what you're referencing, just so that we're all speaking the same thing?
Evaluation tool.
Right.
Okay. I don't think that's a problem. Okay, I thought you meant going through, okay, I misunderstood. I mean, I guess we could do that. I don't, if that's helpful to some people, I want everyone to be comfortable in the evaluation.
And then reviewing, reviewing the process, you know, with, through the established goals that we have determined together. That is also a missing piece, that, you know, and I think Ms. Smith had articulated it well at the launch. We haven't established that as a team, to communicate that to Dr. Boone, to then have this mid-year evaluation. That's a process that we need to plan for the summative evaluation and include that as part of the discussion of reviewing the performance standards, just the tool itself, not to change it, but to, you know, what, what items in here are, are we going to be evaluating Dr. Boone on this year?
I have one more thing that I was, sorry, nothing I want to talk about, though, too. I, I like the idea of doing a stakeholder evaluation, but I do think that Dr. Boone should come up with who that goes to. That should be a list that she knows best who she works with in the community, and so I think that she should establish that.
Madam Chair, I just, I remember, I don't know, did you push your hand up first?
After you.
Okay. Ladies first, I can send it back to you. Actually, I've already spoken once.
I didn't see your hand, Christine, I'm sorry.
Up to this point, I feel as though this whole process has been dictated to us, as opposed to us as a board collaboratively coming together and making a decision as to how we're going to go through this. All I'd like to say.
Madam Chair.
I, I don't take it as being dictorial. We are a new board. Some of us are starting at one level and some of us are starting at another level. We have a lot that we have to deal with, with regards to the substance within our meetings. In a perfect world, ideally, yes. When we meet in July and we have a retreat, we go over the data that was reflected from the year before, we go over what goals and priorities are. But I'm not going to go back in time. We're here now. We have the opportunity, and we can look at this as an opportunity, to come together and provide some feedback. And I, I take what you're saying. I'm, I'm going to take that to heart. But this is not meant to be, as I said before, prescriptive, but it's meant to get us through to a good process that I think we can all agree on for the end-of-year evaluation, which ultimately is what we are responsible for. So I...
Madam Chair. I just wanted to, and I respect my colleague, but I disagree with the term dictorial, because that would insinuate that one person or a small group of individuals are pushing something through. We operate on will of the board and we've had discussions and we've moved along with the process. It was also brought up to have an opportunity, to have a further discussion, to talk about process. And I think that our chair has done that, has been very receptive to the feedback. And we also understand that we're in a different space. And so here we are today to be able to do that. So I just don't agree with the term dictorial. I think that we have an opportunity today to continue that conversation, definitely what Mr. Jordan has said, with some ideas that have come from us, some best practices to continue that process. But this, but I'd like people to, to really hone in when we say mid-year evaluation. One of the things that I did in the conversation and questions to Ms. Pitts was simply this. This is not, anything that we even provide is provided or placed in the superintendent's file. It's not the final evaluation that could even determine, determine whether or not there's a efficient, high rating. We're, we're not giving ratings. We actually provide a professional and formal tool as board members to be able to give feedback in a formal way, based on the information the superintendent has provided, and then things that she may not have seen that we as individual, seven individuals around this table, may assess, so that she's aware that, you know, we may say, you know what? X, Y, and Z, you know, I think that you could work better on this, or I think you're doing great on that. That so that you have it. And anyone who's, many of us have worked in for-profit and nonprofiting well, and we've had to do evaluations. There's an annual evaluation, which is a summative. But there's also check-in opportunities, because no one as an employee or anyone in any organization wants to quote-unquote be blindsided at the end of the year, not giving the opportunity to be able to address any concerns. And so I reiterate the fact that the same thing that we've been through, that this today is an opportunity, anytime that we're talking about this mid-year, is an opportunity for us to provide formal way of feedback. Not dictating, not evaluation, it's a feedback tool to lead up to what we're trying to figure out as far as what the summative will be, which will be the formal evaluation. And so I just want to state that and I'll be quiet.
Dr. Boone.
Couple of things. When the chair and the vice chair and I met in November, we had to do some major juxtaposition because the email came out the day after Thanksgiving and I was told that I would be reporting to the board on Friday, the 30th. And so we worked through that, because we had not had a discussion about timelines or anything else. But in that meeting, my notes indicate that a form would be developed and that I would have an opportunity to see that form. I have not received anything or seen anything that would be the form that the, because I'd use the mid-year form from the example that's in the guidelines. I have not seen what tool the board will be presenting information back to me on. And so just wanted to note that I haven't seen that.
It's, it's just the seven domains, that's the only thing that went out.
Well, I'm, I'm just going back to notes of what you said, that, that, and then ladies said by December 7th, would have received a form.
That, that was the tool.
So, Dr. Boone, did you bring that to the attention that you hadn't received it?
I'm bringing it now. We haven't had another discussion about the mid-year until Dr. Gabriel contacted me that we weren't going to be doing it on the, the original date was the 7th?
It was, yeah, it was 2nd.
The 7th, and then we moved one more week.
And you met on January 15th. And you had received it at that time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, frame of thought. I'll come back to it, go ahead. We'll come back to it.
Okay. Ms. Camson and Ms. Bassini.
I have a question. When, when this instrument, which is used for every employee in Norfolk Public Schools, was first, you know, we were told by the state that we had to a certain day, a certain year, to have to either go all in on it right away or face it in. I mean, there were pilot districts that had already done it to get it going, because we had some samples to look at. And Norfolk decided to face it in. And so part of the phase-in process was doing something that someone mentioned earlier, which was to go, because... because, because the teacher one went first. And so as a principal, the principals and teachers were called in in groups for meetings to sit around the table and go through each domain and the items. And, and it looks exactly the same for a teacher as it does for a superintendent. It's set up and it has a description of what it looks like. And then it has items that you can use to make decisions about. And we sat there, teachers and principals, and looked through those items and chose the ones that we felt were most important to this district. That was how the process was done. And it was done, again, when principal, the next valuation level that went in the next year was the principal one. And principals sat and did, did work with it with the execs. So that, so it seems to me like this one went in, Dr. Boone's first year was my understanding, is when, I think about the same time the, the classifieds were done, as we were finishing, probably Mr. Jordan would know what that timeline was more than me. But, so the thing I wonder, because with all this confusion about what is it that we're evaluating her on, that should have been decided in a meeting with board and superintendent to decide what those were, so it's set. So that every year, you're not saying, what goals are we looking at this year? There should be consistent things that you're looking at every year. So did that not happen three years ago? So is that the instrument that I received? That is the instrument that, that the board and the superintendent put together with those, each of the bullets?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't pick out anything, we never picked out anything different.
Wait, wait, no, but let me get this straight in my mind. So the process that I as a principal and the teachers went through, which was looking at each one of those bullets and choosing the ones or adding other ones, it was, you know, and we had the unions, you know, the whole, whole shebang. And, and the process that we went through to finalize it, and it didn't mean we were going to do it again. That was how it was until they, if the district decided to redo stuff. So my question was, was that done in year one, which would have been, I guess, fifteen, sixteen is when it came in? Or has it never been done?
No, we, we actually started the aligning with the changes in the state prior to Dr. Boone. So, so we've, so we've gone through tools, models, collaborations. And what I was trying to say, or I've been trying to say for several months now, is that.
So was there a final instrument?
Yes, not only was there an instrument.
Then why is there confusion about what we're evaluating her on?
In my opinion, the confusion is we haven't taken the time to even go through the formative that we completed, I mean, the summative that we completed, whichever one, the final, that we completed in June. And we did a, we did a mid-year last, around the same timeframe last year. We did a final. In that final, the board went through each of the domains. We had a tool that we all agreed to, superintendent agreed to, documentation, recommendations and accommodations or grows and glows, whatever it is, terminology that you want to use. And because we've not done that, my expectation would be that Dr. Boone and would have taken those, that final evaluation that we did and would be working on those things until told otherwise. So, so, so when we got to the idea of a mid-year, we got to the idea of a mid-year, the reason I was asking the question about, well, what are we, what's the mid-year evaluation on? Is it looking at the recommendations that were given to her?
That's what I assume, because.
Or was it something different? Well, that's.
Well, see, all right, so, yeah, let me, all right, so, so it was already established a few years ago. You're all working on it, you finished it up. So we have the instrument, the instrument is the instrument is the instrument. Right, that doesn't change. So we know that we're evaluating her based on what the bullets are in that instrument, okay? So, and, and obviously like for domain seven, they're targets because that's student achievement. So those are the targets you're looking at, okay? So I agree with you because I, I started asking in the summer for a copy of the superintendent's evaluation. In fact, when we were sitting in Charlottesville and you had it on your laptop, I asked you to send me a copy, which I did not get. In other words, I did not get a copy of her evaluation until January because I looked at that column that was from the meeting where the board and the superintendent sat down and you had the things that you wanted her to work on this year. To me, that is the starting point because that's, when I, when I was working on this one in January, when I finally got it, that's what I did. I read that column where, where the, the former board wrote the things that they, all the great things, boom, 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 but all the things they want. In fact, when I submitted my, my piece in, it actually missed, it actually list, it'll say, "April twenty eighteen," this was something that the board wanted the superintendent to work on this year. And, and so I was looking at it through the lens of, have I seen evidence that she started? She showed us a lot of evidence, she did a very nice presentation. But there were other ones that I did not see any evidence that that was happening. And those are the things that I noted again, and I actually marked it out as something I'd seen. So it sounds to me like we're, and, and I, and I understand that because I've used it a gazillion times, it's not fair to people that haven't, that, that didn't go through it. And I think that we should have been looking at it back in July. We should have, as a new board, been sitting down and going over, so you're absolutely right. I'm not disagreeing.
I mean, no, no one, I think, is disagreeing with that.
Right, so I think the, that we, as a new board, we were not as well organized as we needed to be as we were trying to make our transition in. But it is what it is, like you said. But at this point, I don't think that there should be any confusion about what she's being evaluated on because the instrument's there, like it is with any teacher or any principal, it doesn't change every year unless the district decides to change those instruments. And so we have that now. And we have the former board's recommend, not recommendations, but directives for what she's supposed to be working on. So we do have it all now. And now we're doing the formative, which I don't even know why we're using the term evaluation because it's a formative, which was created, or, or, I mean, demanded. It's in contracts or was in contracts for classified and all because it is to support the employee because you don't want to get blindsided. When you come into your mid-year, and goodness knows, I had, I delivered them and I received them. And tell me now, if you've got a problem with me, let me know in January. Don't come strolling in in June and say, you didn't do this, this, and this. Or, and maybe I thought I was doing it, but obviously my boss didn't. But the boss should have told me, my supervisor should have told me in January. And so I guess I'm a little confused as to why we're even going through. Let me, let me just get my thought and I'll be done, Melinda, thank you. I'm, Dr. Boone, I'm sorry. But I'm confused, as I sit here waiting for this meeting today, I was thinking, not quite sure why we're talking about, she doesn't know what she's being evaluated on when it's the document is the document and then the list of directives. I just, I respected the previous board and went with what they said because they're the ones that were here last year, not me. And so based on that information, I wish I'd had it in the summer. But once I got it, I sat down, I spent a long time going through that, I read every single thing. I had my highlighter out, looking at it, and, and, and that's what I responded to. And, and then I appreciate the, that I'm now able to share that with the superintendent, which we will be doing because the superintendent deserves to know if I have a problem with something she's doing. How can she fix it? She isn't a mind reader. And, and, and so that, so to me, I'm not quite sure what the problem is here, to tell you the truth. Why don't we just, at this point, why don't we just move on? All right.
After I have my say.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Ms. Campson, for articulating that which I have needed to hear. Because previously, we review goals and things to make sure that we were putting right targets in place with the board so that I would make sure that I was working toward the target. If you remember, the last conversation we had, something was said about, well, and in June we'll talk about the targets. I said, how can I respond to targets that are after the fact? And so what you have articulated is exactly what I've been, been, I think the conversation the board needs to have and somebody to check off, or the board to say, we check off on, on, on what you've described. Additionally, and to your point of everything not being in place, one of the things that also happened with the previous board is that we would look at a few of high leverage, that not necessarily everything would be what the attention, but also because it was mid-year, still time to get to some of the other pieces that may not have been an early attention focus based on a, a variety of needs. And so thank you for your, the last part of your description of, that's exactly what I, and that's what I said to the board. I am working from the previous board's document, given the fact that I had not, we had not solidified around a direction of what would be going on. And I said, so what I'm sharing with you is based on what I had been working from as well as, you know, what, what it shifts, anything at the state level or, you know, anything locally that we focused on. And so that's what I've been trying to address.
And, and then I assume when you're doing that, just get this last piece in on my conversation. Then there are, for example, there are targets that, that, that you have for certain achievement things, certain achievement items, there are targets, not for all of them, in fact, as Ms. Bessine and I were going through, I was listing targets for one of the priorities that, that we'd put on, I suggested one. But, and we put those in yellow so everyone would know. But all the other targets, like the graduation targets and those, they're already there. And so we have those targets and certainly we wouldn't use the target we made up for a, a particular priority because it's new and you haven't seen it.
And in addition, we provided.
But it should be ones that you know what, you should know what your targets are, and so should we. And they should be very clear, every single, especially with domain seven, because that's the most important domain. Because that's what we're here for. I mean, all the other things are important, but what is a school's main job? All right, I'm getting cut off, is, never mind, all right.
And if I say, also, don't forget, in the presentation that we did, the state has also given us some targets also.
Right.
So that's why, when I, when I presented on the mid-year, I said, rather than recreate every presentation that had been done to the, done to the board since July, I reference in the document, see such in October, whatever date, because it was, again, one of the challenges in putting it together for a board is that the majority of those types of data presentations are public presentations. And so what we've also tried to supplement those data presentations with is how we've gotten to the work. So, you know, we had the English and the math content coordinators come in and they did a session in terms of how we're approaching the work and all of that. So it becomes the collapsing of that. I, I think we, we receive, the, the board receives a lot throughout the year on domain seven. And then I feel it important to also provide a lot of the stuff for, for the other six domains just simply because, as you were saying, sometimes that's the work that I'm engaged in daily that the board may not see.
I mean, I appreciate all the organizations and stuff that I didn't know you were part of, that you listed for the professionalism domain. But we do have the targets. And, and so in, in June, we'll have all those because we'll be able to do two-by-twos for anything that we've missed.
Well, that's something that we all need to agree on as a part of this, as a part of the process. So, Ms. Martin?
I think, I agree with what Lauren, Ms. Campson was saying earlier about just moving forward with what was established in June and not wanting to change anything. So I think that's where my confusion was coming into because I just feel like I'm jumping into something and moving it forward. And then we'll have the opportunity at the, in June or July or whenever to reassess and communicate that for the next year.
Honestly, that would be, my recommendation is that we just, at some point, if it's a motion or whatever else, or just general will, that we disagree to accept the goals that the prior board had so that that's just an official action as we're moving forward. Because we're in the middle of building a brand-new accountability plan. We're revising how we're reporting that information out. No one said anything about moving the targets this year. Even though we know that the state has changed the accountability requirements. And that didn't change, and nothing that I know from what I've seen in here changed within what the prior evaluation was based on. We, we got that after July one. So it still begs the question for me, even when I look at that, the former, and I think we, a lot of us asked about information regarding data and as far as SOLs and so forth, what did that look like? We didn't move in those things. So I, I think, just one, as a board, we're agreeing that whatever the targets were in that year, and just like I've said several times with the state's accreditation, you know, this is a buy year in many respects for when we look at academic achievement and that we should be working on building what those targets are. And I think that we're having a very robust conversation and I appreciate the work that Ms. Bessine and Ms. Campson are doing in leading that effort for us when it comes to the new accountability plan because that's essentially establishing what the new targets are based on the new objective that the state has placed for us as a board.
Right, because that accountability plan doesn't start until the fall. We're in the planning year.
Yes.
So the things we're putting in the accountability plan, we're not holding the superintendent for this year. Next year is when we'll be looking at it.
But the state's accountability system was effective this year.
Right.
With the exception, with the exception of the career.
Right, because it changed like the number of schools being accredited. And I accept the, the new, when I'm looking at her thing and I'm looking, I would say, yes, I'll go with the newer credibility thing that was optional for us, but I don't have a problem with that. It just seems like we have what we need.
We, we, we do, we, we, we have what we need. What we need to, as a board, to discuss as we come together on what we desire for the summative evaluation is, I really do, would like for you all to look at this, at the timeline. As, you know, Mr. Jordan alluded to in his document, we do have to work from June backwards so that we can plan for it. That's the first point. The second point is, I, I would like for us to consider looking at the domains. If this is the tool that we want to use, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing from the board, let's not change anything mid-year, let's keep it. If there are items that you want to stress or emphasize at this point in time, we need to be clear with Dr. Boone on that. And we need to, we need to decide that as a board.
I'm sorry.
And, and then, I'll get to you in just a second. And then, and then finally, make sure that we all agree on what that process is and then the delivery of how that's going to be. That, that's, that's important for us. And this is why we're here today, to do that. This is our opportunity to do that.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think the, the benefit of the discussion that we're having is we get to hear where everybody is. But one, one nagging concern I have is I hear the accountability plan keep getting mentioned and I still like for us to go back and, as a board, and just be able to talk through the, the final evaluation that was done last year. So the, the accountability plan as it existed previously is the school board's accountability plan. From the school board's accountability plan, we work to align strategic plan, sources in the superintendent's evaluation and the board's work to try to guide us through a period of transition to where we are today. So from my view, the school board's accountability plan is not also the superintendent's targets, measures that we're, solely. There are, there are items in the evaluation tool that we pulled from the accountability plan. But as you know, there are some things in there that have various time periods. There are some things, even when you read the guidelines document that it has, it, you know, recommends to us that as we talk about data sources, are the data caused by or responsible the superintendent? Do the data reflect responsibilities, including the superintendent's job description and other things? So I'm saying, because we are a new board and have such a blend, I just think it's important that we start with what we have and go through it and make sure we're all singing from the same sheet of music. And if there are any changes that we want to make for the final of this year, such as the conversation that's going around about the two-by-twos and the accreditation and other things, I mean, we need to be able to talk through that as a team. And so I just want to make sure that we don't lose, lose sight of that, in my opinion.
We'll probably do that as we get through this right now.
So we can, we can start on that process, but I'd like to make sure that we leave enough time for the other part of what we wanted to get to in our agenda. Because it is five o'clock.
May I address some timelines related to the end of? Oh, Ms. Bessine had a hand, I'm sorry.
I, I think you may touch on part of my question. So how about you? Go ahead, Dr. Boone.
So I understand the discussion around data. Don't have any problems with that. But let me tell you what our testing window is. Testing, SOL testing windows from May thirteenth through June seventh.
Okay.
And that, and there's still a chance for term graduates who would need to have an opportunity to retake for, in order to meet graduation requirements. Because the state changed its accountability system, as you, you recall, back in the fall, we shared with, with the board that the state now has. that the state now has a standard that if a student has already taken, taken the number and met the number of verified credits needed at the high school level, they don't have to retake the SOL test. And so every school district is going through this, okay, who's already gotten their one math or two maths or whatever else. So there's a verification process that we have to undertake, and so that's part of that summer process of what goes on. The other piece that we don't have at that point is the growth model. And I know, I see here that it says using both the old method of calculation and new growth, and I do have to push back on that because the state's accountability system is what it is. And so I'm trying to determine if I'm being held to a double standard or a dual standard on that one, rather than the state's accountability system that includes factors in growth. Certainly, there's, there's the SOL performance rates, and we will share that as we can, you know, as we go through the process. But growth does matter, and I want to make sure that that is not excluded from my evaluation. The other piece, also as we go through, the math standards were changed. And what happens when a new test is developed? You have to go through an equating process, meaning you have to evaluate each of the items and determine what's a pass rate, which items are, you know, highly difficult, medium difficulty and all of that. So with the standards having been changed, the state, for those school districts that have four-by-four high school credits, meaning they get credit, full credits each semester, the state has not issued to, did not have the tests ready, I assume, for the fall, well, January assessments for schools that are on four-by-four. Meaning that the first time the new math SOL test will be administered is this spring. The state will not be-
This spring.
This spring. So therefore, the state will not have all of the, they have to get to a certain number of tests in each of the math contents, courses, in order to be able to do the equating process. So right now, what we're hearing, that might be mid-July or August before we get the mathematics information. So I didn't want anybody to think that I'm not being transparent on this, but I'm letting you know the pure facts on some of these June conversations. Chronic absenteeism and things, most of the reports are signed off on mid, May to July and August. The graduation completion index is not done until August graduation, August graduates are factored in. So you'll have your June graduates, and any summer graduates are then factored in. And so it's, and you have up until August 30 because, you know, depending on when the school has its summer school and all of that. And so it's usually the latter part of September before graduation results are released. So I just, I just wanted to share that in terms of a frame of reference of what we're talking about. Virginia's not unique, as I've said before, in the fact that state accountability system and all the final data aren't released until later in the fall. And that's why with the previous board, the conversation about what the final data looked like rolled into the mid-year conversation with me previously. And we discussed expectations and all of that, and how it gets factored in. And that's why when you look at the document from last year's evaluation, I indicated, one, I always evaluate myself needs improvement until such time that our schools are fully accredited and all children are making the progress that they should. I don't, frankly, I don't ever see that as being a finished product. But, and so then I talked about, you know, what would be going on. And so those are the data presented. But I just wanted the board to be clear. Don't have any problems with having two-by-twos, but understand the data that we will have will be very limited at best because the testing window does not end until June 7. The verifications and any term graduate, any term graduates who still need to test for graduation are going on. And then, of course, graduation is that, I think graduation starts the 11th.
Could I give a quick response? It seems like then there's a dilemma, because we know that domain seven is the big, I mean, the reason it's worth 40 points is because the state, rightly so, that's the primary thing we're scoring on. The teachers get scored with it being 40 percent, principals too, everyone does. And they're getting, they get scored by June 30th because they have to hold their conferences. So it seems like the dilemma we have is, are we now going to need to use 2018 data for this evaluation? I don't, that doesn't seem fair to the superintendent, because she's had all this time, you know, to do things and improve areas. But, or are we going to use the preliminary so that we have current 2019 data? We have to use one or the other. I personally was disappointed to see a rating on domain seven when I thought, how did they come up with it if they didn't see any data beforehand, if they didn't see it till September? So I think, are we saying that we, I can't even imagine that we would draw it back and use 2018. But to do that, to evaluate domain seven, when principals are evaluated on the same thing, teachers are evaluated on the same thing, without any data, I don't know how you could do that. I mean, as a principal, I was evaluated on my data by June 30th, and it was later coming then. Now, it's a much faster turnaround because it's all computerized, and not only is it computerized, they have to know right away who didn't pass so they can see who can retake. So I think that that's, and I'm open, you know, this is the problem I have. I see what you're saying. But I'm, but my feeling is, we've got to use data for domain seven. So what kind of data are we using? And it, see, and I don't think you can, yeah, but how can you, but how can you eliminate SOLs from the evaluation? I don't think you can either.
I'm not for that, yeah.
So, and maybe this is that we don't have to decide the second. I'm not saying that because I know we need to get to the next thing. But we certainly have to decide it well before the superintendent comes in for her evaluation, because she needs to know. But it has to be one or the other. You're either going to have to use the old data from the last year, which is, I mean, I wouldn't want to be evaluated on my data a year ahead, because I would assume I'm improving every year. Certainly, we're improving here. So, I mean, all right, I'll stop. But do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, right. But we have to have something to base our decisions off of. And this is, this is just trying to see if we can get us to that place where we can get that information, whatever it might be, based on the circumstances that the state has with the math test change and the window that we have. But we've got to have something.
And we maybe need to look and see what other boards are doing across the state. What are they doing in Virginia Beach and in Chesapeake?
Okay, we'll do five, about five more minutes, then we'll go to the next section, okay?
You know, to piggyback off of what Ms. Campson said, you know, and then, for every workshop that I've attended, and we all heard it too, in September when we went, is that the SOL is just one piece of academic data, not to be eliminated, no, you know, absolutely not. But that we have to have other things. And they reiterated over and over again, do not make SOLs your only piece of academic data to evaluate your superintendent, because that would be unfair. So we have, what we haven't talked about yet with this, with our group, is what, with Dr. Boone, is what other academic indicators do we want to use in conjunction with the SOL data to determine how we move-
That's why I brought up the accountability plan, because the accountability plan is structured beyond that.
But next year.
Next year, yeah. But what do we want to pull?
Well, we have an accountability plan now, and we still, and every month, we've been spending a lot of time, as Dr. Boone has indicated, her presentations are all pieces of evidence as to how we're moving forward academically. I mean, we've spent a lot of time, you know, in our work sessions, in our workshops, to go over where we, where we are, what progress is being made, what strategies are being used. You know, we could talk about CTE, how many students have received credentials, you know, we've talked about on term graduation. We've talked about lots of stuff that we could be using in conjunction with our SOL data. So, well, and I'm repeating this. I'm not saying do not use SOL data, but that is just one piece of evidence.
And there are six other domains.
We've been encouraged and it's been emphasized to not make that the sole piece of information. So, so we do have information.
But it seems like our dilemma is here.
That's not a final ask. That's just something that I, I would like to have going into the evaluation process. I want to have that information. If we have preliminary data, I want to know what it's looking like.
I don't see how we can do an evaluation with that.
And that's just what I need. But that might not be what everybody else wants, and-
But that's part of the discussion.
Yeah. And that's not my sole, that's not my sole decision-maker either, because we've got other things that we're looking at. But to me, that's where I felt, going back reflective learning from what we've done in the past, that would have been helpful. It would have been helpful, so.
So, yeah, so, yeah, I had one. I just wanted to make sure that when I was looking at the valuation and the standards, that the indicators hadn't changed. And we were pretty much using the same indicators from the state, right?
That was my opening comment, that if we were looking to change those, that was contract negotiation.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would have to be represented.
Yeah, so we're not changing those. But I do pose the question back to you, Dr. Boone, by giving us that background information, and I think we had had a brief conversation about it before. So we get the preliminary data information in July, like, July what?
We get better preliminary data that includes things like the VAF assessments and all of that, usually mid-July.
Mid-July, so-
Still considered preliminary, but we get better data in July. But we have in June, it's just simply a school's raw pass/fail rates. That's all we have.
Definitely. So, and this question back to Mr. Cloud, as far as the evaluation based on the state statute here and the code that we have, there's, is there a certain timeframe that we have to conduct the evaluation? Or we, as a board, determine when that annual date is?
Well, I take annually to mean once a year, so that I, I'm not sure. How it was established that the, that the annual evaluation would be done kind of in line with the contract, that's how, that's how it is. But I would say, I mean, at this point, you need to have a new annual evaluation before the end of the year, and-
That would be June 30.
Whenever it was before, it was, I guess, in June.
It was June 30. That was when it was due.
So that, you know, you're, you're pretty much stuck with that schedule. And that doesn't mean that, you know, if there, if there are things that can't be captured for the annual evaluation, then you can have a quarterly evaluation later in the year or mid-year, or something to take into consideration some of the issues that Dr. Boone raised. The other thing I was going to suggest is that we talk to the Virginia Department of Education for guidance on those. Because I'm assuming that that's something that, I think it's not unique to the City of Norfolk's school board.
Right.
And that was going to be my other piece there, because Patty Pitts had really just said, you know, it's whatever your board really comes up with, as long as you have the summative. But I think it's also a camel's, like, catch-22, that this evaluation guideline was created in 2015. We're now dealing with a brand-new, the state has changed from what we've known as SOLs being, you know, that was a standard bearer for years. So we know we get much better data as far as testing and everything else at the whole in July. But then contractually, we've got to do something by June 30th. So I almost posed the question back and asked Dr. Boone, support, definitely going back to VDOE. But Dr. Boone, kind of placing it back to you as the superintendent, what additional recommendations would you probably make, and I don't know if it has to be done here now, that you would want to be evaluated on to show progress if we had to use a June 30th deadline based, including SOLs? But then also, because, you know, one of my passion pieces is on achievement gaps. Are we closing the achievement gaps in those different areas? So, I'm sorry, but you're confusing me some. So if you have the document that Dr. Gabriel has, on page 28, 29, there's, I'm sorry, it starts on 27, but on 28, 29, there's a figure 4.1, examples of measures of division-wide student academic progress. And in there, they reference, these again, recommendations from VDOE about how a board can go about doing this with the superintendent. It has in the first category, all students' academic progress. First bullet, progress on SOL assessments. Doesn't matter if they are old, new, whatever. Improvement on advanced pass rates on SOL assessments. You find that in the accountability plan. Increased percentage of middle school students taking high school level courses. You'll find that in the accountability plan. Improvements in high school graduation rates. So if we, as a team, would review these things and discuss them, they feed into what our terminology told you.
On page 27 is the narrative. It, in the middle of the page, it says, "Examples of measures of division-wide student academic progress." School boards and superintendents, second sentence in that paragraph, well, let me go. "To be able to measure goal attainment, superintendents must identify valid measures of student academic progress appropriate to their school division, students, populations, learning needs and priorities. School boards and superintendents should develop mutually agreed-upon measures to include in the evaluation to best reflect the priorities of the district."
So, I appreciate you going back to that page, because I knew you probably would.
Who, me?
Oh, that, I, my question was to drive you to that page. Really, I've been looking.
That was already there.
So my thing is, is that we already have another guideline that's already there that we can work from and that we can find mutually agreed upon. And my thing is, is there anything in this one, based on the senior members who've been here on the prior board, that deviates from what's here that you all measured the superintendent on domain seven on?
When the, when the opportunity is presented for us to go through and review what we've done, why we did it, how we did it, how we came up with the scores and recommendations, I think that would provide an opportunity for any questions, answers, and any SWOT analysis that anybody would like to do. And all I've been trying to advocate, you know, since September at least, is that we do that. And I think if we would do that, you know, you can ask away, and we can explain away, and whatever modifications need to be made, we can make them.
Yeah, but I'm going to say in general right now, is there anything that deviated from this, yes or no?
I mean, I can't, I'd like to have stuff in front of me, so it's easy.
Got it up on your thing.
No, I have in front of me the guidelines. I don't have in front of me-
What we actually use.
What we did. And I can, there's a series of, you know, we can go to videotapes, a series of meetings when there's a board, we discussed it. And I know for the last couple of years, you know, Dr. Gabriel kind of helped shepherd that process for us, so, and as a previous board.
So I think that the conversation has been a good one for us to have regarding the process, okay? What I would ask everyone to do is to look at what the domains are, make sure that you are comfortable with that. We have to meet with Dr. Boone to discuss if there's anything that deviates from those domains.
Time out. I thought there was agreement, consensus at the table that the seven indicators were done.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just, okay. So, so then if that's where everyone is right now, I'm just going to repeat it. We are keeping the domains, one through seven, and everything that's within those domains, the indicators, okay?
Definitions, the indicators we haven't decided on, it's the definitions.
Well, it's the bullet points that are, that's what I'm calling indicators. So I think we're saying the same thing.
Those are particularly, and I believe it says, those don't all have to be all inclusive. It says, "Examples may include but are not limited to."
But this is what I was trying to say, those are examples.
Examples.
But this is, oh, hold on a second.
But we haven't, I asked the question if we changed it from last year.
No. And that was the same thing. But I'm just saying, I was just commenting on the fact that on the, on the summative document, it says, "Sample performance indicators." So as a group, we can decide, you know, is there something? But, but I think these captured most of them, but again-
That's what I'm asking everybody to go, we-
I thought that's what I asked when I said, did not the previous board sit down and from the samples, choose the ones and add the ones like we've done, like we did for the teachers and the principals, so that once every year starts, these are the indicators we're looking at, and you need to have a preponderance of them to get that rating. So we're not, we, I'm confused because it sounded like we're saying that these are only samples, but I thought we said-
The document, that's what I was saying.
Oh, what's in the document?
The document says, "Examples may include, may include but not limited to." So it could be all of these, it could be two of these. That's all I'm just saying.
Yeah, but on the instrument that we're actually using are the ones that are done on that instrument that comes, the one that runs off that we get. The Norfolk, where it has Norfolk Public Schools on it. That's it, so that's, we have it.
And the ones that were addressed were addressed in the document, the copy that you- And the ones that were addressed were addressed in the document, the copy that you received.
Yeah.
Dr. Gabriel, one, one point that I, I need to raise in looking at the timelines and everything on this email you sent late last night, I do not see a time when I would receive the board's comments relative to the formative information provided.
Oh, that's a good point.
You mean, oh, I hadn't put that in there yet. I was just, because we were going to discuss that.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I didn't want that to be lost. I had provided, you all are collecting, but I just wanted to know when would I learn.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I just hadn't, I just hadn't put that in there.
Be sooner rather than later.
Oh, it's going to be within, like, a few weeks, definitely. Within two weeks or so. But, okay, so we need to wrap this discussion up.
So, can, because I, I think I would just want to make sure that it's.
Crystal clear?
Yeah. Because I'm, I'm looking at the assessment and particularly the indicators. And we all got a copy of it. And as far as what the performance standards are, which haven't changed, that state code, that's what it has to be. But what the indicators were in each one of those standards, that we're all, are we all good with those? Because we're, I think from our conversation that I'm taking back here is that we're saying, it's middle of the year, we're not trying to rock the boat and change a whole lot of things. We'll do that in preparation for as we work towards.
The indicators that are on the document that has Norfolk Public Schools.
Exactly.
Said Norfolk Public School indicators that were determined by the board. Okay, that's what we're using, right?
Well, yeah, that, and exactly. So, if that's the case, then I'd like to, before we come out of this session here, just to do a motion that will utilize the same performance standards and indicators from, that the prior board had and that we're not changing anything around that.
I thought they all seemed fine.
You know, as we work towards the end of the year for the summative.
That makes sense. I don't know why we changed what the last board did.
I want to be very fair, I'm not trying to move the needle. I hate when people try to move the needle on me. But this is what the goals are.
Yeah, that we just do what, we use the same ones that the last board used.
So, I, I move that, Madam Chair.
A second. All right. So, is there any opposition to that? Everyone's in favor then? Okay, all right. All right, so then what, what we will do is we will work on getting another date set to have further discussion about the process for the summative evaluation. And we'll take all of the feedback that we received today in order to work on that.
Could we have someone from the State Department come? That's, I know it seems like I'm redundant that I keep asking that.
But, yeah.
So that we could get some, I know they'll say some things are our decision, but maybe they can clarify some, some points. I just would like to have someone here.
Can we get a summary of today's meeting of how we're going to move forward? And can we get it in a timely manner so that when we have our next meeting, we've had sufficient time to go over it and not just one night or two nights to go over it and be able to make an inform, and make an informed decision?
Sure, and this is a process. So, today is not just, you know, we're, this is the end. It's, it's, it's a process. And so, we're going to be, you know, fluid as we, you know, adjust what this, what this is going to be. So, I'm comfortable to do that. We've agreed on these. Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead now and just go ahead and get a motion to go into closed session.
So, what are we going into closed session for, to do?
Well, we have a motion, actually.
Well, as I understand it, the board's going to discuss the performance of the superintendent?
The mid-year.
The mid-year.
But.
I don't want to put in on the 30th. Mondays ago.
So, just for clarity, we just talked about a process. And now we're going to.
Oh, I thought we all turned in.
I haven't turned in anything.
Okay, you know what? This is, this, we can either move forward or we can halt. And we're moving forward. We're moving this division forward. This is an opportunity, not for us to break down items, but it's an opportunity for us as a board, as a new board, to come together and use this time to talk amongst ourselves about what we have concerns about, what we see that has been done well, and to give that feedback back to Dr. Boone. And if she receives that feedback and says, you know what? I've actually done a lot of work on this area and let me show it to you. We might need to have the information brought back to us. Or it might be for her to say, thank you very much. You know, as a professional myself, I like it when I get feedback. And it helps me to grow. And I always look at it as something that's to be beneficial. So, I don't understand what the confusion is going into having a board discussion on our thoughts on what the domains are for the superintendent's evaluation. And I just, I don't understand that.
Well, I thought we were moving forward.
And, and I have, I have expressed it a couple of times. And just five minutes ago, we agreed on using these indicators. So, now we're going to go in. So, this is the discussion we just had for the last hour and a half. It's a discussion that I had been hoping to have all along. This was, that was a great, you know, first step in talking about the process. The process that was initiated in November did not include all of us. And so, no one here is arguing the fact that a mid-year evaluation is informative and valuable. We all agree on that.
Okay.
What we don't, where I think there's disagreement, and respectfully so, is that we just agreed on a pro, we just talked about a process. And now we're going to go in and discuss input that was already gained before having that discussion. So, that's.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, I think we keep, I think we keep mixing an evaluation, a summative evaluation and criteria, which is what I, we just voted on, which was the summative. We're talking about mid-year feedback. And I don't, and I think we need to change the term of evaluation. It is a part of the state's.
I think I even put reflections on my thing.
Yeah, it's the state's, it's a part of the state's overall evaluation process. However, it is, again?
Not required, right?
Mm-mm.
Not required, but I think that with a new board, giving feedback, and this feedback is based off of superintendent's self-evaluation and the items listed in each of the domains. These are the things, and it's same thing. These are the things I think are doing really well. And these are the things that we've got, provide feedback on. It is not a formal, it's not formal in the file. It is not, it's simply to, to almost take a, this is where we think we are on some things here, not based on any of these indicators. It's feedback.
So, so the form, though, that everyone used to provide input, I thought, was from that tool. And as Dr. Boone indicated earlier, she has not yet seen that form.
It's the same form. It's the domains, it's what's in her contract.
So, I, I want to be, Madam Chair, I like to be fair. I mean, have you or Ms. Smith or Mr. Jordan done, done any feedback on it with the form of the tool?
No.
So, I mean, if, if it's to be fair, since you all haven't done that, you know, do you want time to do that based on, on, on another tool?
Okay, now I'm confused.
You're confused.
I mean, I. Well, I, you know why I didn't do it, okay?
I know, I didn't do it for any reason, yeah.
So, the question was asked, you don't understand why, why some are confused. I can only speak for myself. I'm confused in part because questions I've asked have gone unanswered. We've had a good discussion today, which I'm thankful for the good discussion. I don't know what the board's direction was to Dr. Boone in terms of the self-eval that she presented. Because I would have had some additional input in terms of what she provided. So, and we just got finished talking about, at least for me, and I think Ms. Camson spoke to it earlier. She did what I would have thought the whole team would do. I didn't know she was doing that. So, to me, if we're going to give, this is, if we're trying to give seven individual feedback mechanisms to the superintendent, that's one thing. If we're trying to give a team feedback to the superintendent, then I think it's important that the team is clear on what we're doing, what Dr. Boone has given to us. Do we want to hear more from her before we give any additional feedback? We have not been able to get to that point until today. The information that you shared last night was 10 o'clock last night. It's, so, take some time to prepare, which I think Ms. Smith was saying earlier.
Well, then you have out, we just set a date for next week to do what we wanted to do tonight. And then everybody, now that we know what we're doing, because I thought we were going to try and move forward. I mean, if we keep revisiting and revisiting, we'll be sitting here and June will roll around and we've given no feedback to our superintendent. So, why don't we just say, if three people haven't done it yet, then let's, and they feel now that they now know what we're doing, that's my understanding, then let's give them another week to do. We, the first one I did and we were given a week to do it, I got it done that week. So, and then, because we need to move on this.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
We'll just have to bring us all back in again. And next week, after they've had a chance to turn it in, and then we can do what you plan to do. Would that be acceptable to everyone now that we all know the direction? Now you would start from, and do it in the week, the way the, the rest of us did it, that one, we only had a week last time. Would that be acceptable? And so that we can get moving on this. I mean, this is going, we'll be here 10 years from now.
I'm, I'm willing to accept that if.
As a compromise, because they're saying that now.
As a compromise, but we've, we've got to have that conversation as a board.
Yes.
We have to.
I don't think we should each be just giving her.
Oh, I agree.
And, and I hear what you're saying. I, I hear what you're saying about starting from the same base. It's the.
We need a compromise. To me, this would be a compromise. I see what they were saying. I mean, you know, I was feeling the same way. I just went ahead and did what the charge was, but I'm familiar with the instrument. So, now, if, now that everyone said they're clear and this was a good conversation, if we could now ask the people that haven't done it to go ahead and do it by.
Based on the prior year's evaluation.
Right, and, well.
Right, that's what I'm hearing, right?
We all agreed on. If now they could have a week to do it.
Okay.
And then we could come back and have, and schedule another extra meeting next week because we got to do it. We have to get this done. This is just, this is a transition year and we're going to have to do a lot of extra meetings, I guess. But could we do that? Would everyone be, now that we have the baseline set, to give them another week to do it?
My question is, are we going to have a meeting to, to give, discuss our feedback? Then have another meeting to go back and trace back from last June forward and discuss every little thing? And then what? Like, I'm just ner, I just, I've, my feedback is, I'm really nervous about time.
Yeah, I mean.
That's fine. I think, I, my understanding was what we're going to do tonight was to bring our feedback in and bring it together.
I keep having these meetings.
Yeah, I'm with you. But I think if they had three, these three, if certain people on the board had serious concerns about the process, now we, hopefully, I thought my understanding was we answered those concerns tonight with this discussion, which was very helpful for all of us. Now, now they still need to do their feedback because what if one of them has some serious concern with something the superintendent's doing and that's not included and she doesn't get the op? That's the whole point of the formative.
That is the whole point.
Then if we give them the week that we, that the rest of us did it in to do it, would they, would that be a good compromise? And then we could come back and start with where we thought we were going to be tonight.
Night.
One week later. One week, give it. And then that'll, then we'll do it and then we can, then have another, we'll have to have another meeting to present it. I'm not sure if the whole board presents it. Mr. Jordan, what is the?
I think we would combine it.
I think Dr. Boone, I think that Dr. Boone has asked, and I don't want to speak for you, but to have the whole board.
Oh, okay.
To do it, if that's something that you would still like, yes.
Absolutely. Well, I would too if it were me.
Can I just ask for clarity then on, on what my assignment is?
So, I, can you hold it over just a second? Because I, I think my question is, I hope you get to that one.
Okay.
So, Dr. Boone raised the question about the instrument and the tool. And I just want to bring clarity around that. That the instrument and the tool is going to be based off the same thing, Dr. Boone, that you gave us, your self-evaluation, which has the standards that has areas of strength and then areas needing work and strategic improve, improving performance. And that we would list those items. So, there may be some things that you didn't list in, in strengths that we may consider in there that we would add.
Okay.
And then also as areas that we may consider that we may need work on. So, are you amenable to that?
I am.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jordan, did that answer kind of fires to the document?
Document.
My question is, are we supposed to be filling out that?
No, we're, we're going to, if it, I know we, about the electronic one down there.
I didn't use that one.
No.
Okay, I'm not, that's what.
So, what, yeah, so what we're going to.
It was too hard. I just made my own chart.
So, what we, so if everyone is, is amenable, so if this is the format here, and Madam Chair, it's fine, then I'll turn it into a PDF that will, that you can type into. And then you can print, very easy and print it out. Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah, there's also.
Yeah, use the same one, just turn it into a PDF that you can type into.
In the past, we just used the Word document, just type.
Yeah, that's what I think Paul just said. I didn't have that, so I just made my own chart.
No, I don't think we need to create, I mean, there's a Word document, we use the Word document. You go right into domains, you can type your stuff and.
Input everybody's.
Okay. If we want to consolidate, consolidate.
So, we'll get that sent out. We'll get that sent out.
And we have a fresh start next week. That's the new start line, right? Is everyone okay with that?
After the work session, so we, I can be.
What, you're talking next week? Yeah, if we do it next week, yeah.
I think we need to do it next week because she, I, I mean, I'm not, I just don't want to speak.
I don't want to delay the process any further, but it needs, the timely feedback needs to be done.
So, we're, we're talking about after the work session?
Okay.
I mean, is the work session next week?
It has to be before the work session.
So.
It's going to have to be before the work session.
It has to be before.
I just, I have a, just so the board knows, I have a personal conflict. I was going to ask you about it. Because I have my final dress rehearsal for the opera that night.
Ooh, yay!
So, doing anything after?
Would, would.
6:30 would accrue me for that.
What about if we were to do it on the 13th? That would be the following week.
You have agenda planning tomorrow? I have a whole list of, well, that's yours meeting. So, if I don't have to be there, I'm fine. As a matter of fact, I'm out of town.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be us.
You know what? That's a good plan right now. Already, already.
For which day, Dr. Boone? You're talking about the 13th?
Mm-hmm. I'm gone the rest of the conference.
I actually have that scheduled for board meeting just in case. Just in case, yeah, okay.
You know, we've got the budget.
I didn't go into February, work everything out for February. I've got a.
Yeah, for agenda planning.
Okay.
That's going to bring people in.
I've got a meeting that night.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so then this is what we'll do. We have agenda planning tomorrow. We'll send out the date for tomorrow. We're looking at the 13th, okay? Lauren, we're, we're just going to have to flow with it. If we couldn't get to it tonight and we're trying to get to it within one or two weeks, this is the compromise.
What time are we thinking about doing? Because there's an.
I'll send it out. I'll send it out. We're not going to.
That's just tentatively scheduled. So, we don't actually have a appeal on this calendar yet.
We have, it would have to be sometime after, what, 4 o'clock, Christine, normally with your work schedule?
Four, fine.
Four, so sometime after four.
Okay, I'll just have to cancel what I had. All right, I, I'll do that to get this moving.
Valentine's Day, she's over there rearranging.
Valentine's Day, she's over there rearranging.
I said we should do it Valentine's evening, 'cause no one sent me out dinner.
No, it's the day before, no, 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 no. Okay, so, well, we will meet, we're looking tentatively, February the thirteenth, four o'clock, for board to discuss what we've received, what, after, uh, everyone has completed their, uh, portion of the eval to have that board discussion. Are we all in agreement?
February thirteenth, yeah.
Yes.
I'm good.
All right.
All right, and so I'll send out the updated tool tonight.
Okay, all right. Um, I would, uh, one other note, um, for February the sixth, I know that we normally don't vote on items, um, in our work session, but the applicants for the, um, CAC committee, I do wanna get those approved. And so I know that at our last business meeting, uh, everybody was able to get, um, the applicants, uh, and some of the policies that are associated with it. I just want to move on, um, voting for the applicants for the CAC. And then we'll have the discussion at a later time on the advisory councils. So, on the sixth, be prepared to take action on the applicants which we've all received. So read them, if there's any concerns that you have, we'll discuss it, but I'd like to take action on it.
That brings me to a question, are we actively seeking candidates to be on the various committees that we have?
It's my understanding that within the committees, that they are trying to actively recruit to get new, new folks on, because we know that we have vacancies and they come up at different times. And then we're trying to work on what our process is gonna be as a board, we have a policy, we just kinda have to come together and figure out, um, if there's anything that we want to change as a board, um, with regards to, um, the applicants and, um, approving the applications and whatnot, so we can get people in the seats to graciously do the work that's required.
Okay.
So is it just in the committee themselves, they're finding their people, or do we have a spot on the dish?
We all do it.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, they're always accepting people.
That change in the policy that we made previously, the superintendent would do a, uh, advertising in Feb, in February, we would try to make decisions like in March, something like that. I think the current policy still says that we wanna make sure that we are, uh, constantly advertising and that we would try to, uh, review and make decisions as, as needed.
I don't think that that was something that we really discussed.
That's true.
We haven't, right.
And that's why I'm asking the question, because it wasn't until I saw the applications that I was fully aware that we're actively seeking, um, people to sit on these or to participate on these committees. And I just think it helps for us to be aware of our processes, when they are working, when to utilize them, how to utilize them. That element in everything that we do, I'm not gonna say everything, 'cause that's too absolute. And a lot of the things that we do, that element is missing. The element of structure and being aware of what's coming down the road is missing in what we do. We don't find out about it until it is presented to us. And that's where we, as a board, have to improve upon what we're doing.
I agree, 'cause I'm a big person on structure. However, you said the key word, "when it's presented to us." So this is where we have to go back to our calendar and going back to information. It relies heavily on, um, the superintendent and the administration to inform us when those things are coming up. And now we have a calendar where we have those things that we're listed in, that we've gotta pay attention to them. But I think that, um, we've gotta do, I agree with you about the structure piece. And that's why I, I'm not kinda like jumping off the rails, because I really see this year as an opportunity for us to identify those things and to really find out how we can put better processes in place on how we operate. So I do agree with you in that respect, but, you know, it's the same thing I said about certain things that come before us, just kinda letting us know and not just saying, "Well, it's on board docs." I mean, we're, we're very busy people, a lot of things are going.
Just in fairness to the, to the administration, the board calendar that we have, and at least that we've been using, spells out for the whole year, uh, uh, when we should be doing certain things, when things are due. And hopefully, when you all are in agenda planning, you are looking at that calendar and doing it. So we don't necessarily need the administration, excuse my language, to babysit us. Um, the stuff is laid out and it's there, and it's on us as a board to, uh, to execute those things.
All right, um, so.
I have, I'm sorry, I have mentioned, though, at our meetings that we are taking applicants, like I've said that.
You have, several times.
An idea, yeah.
I've heard both of you say something about it.
Okay, all right, so we will, uh, come back on February the sixth for our work session. The following week, we will be meeting, uh, in closed session for the evaluation purposes.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to tack on to, um, so if we are, I asked a question last time, last week, about GAC applications that have come through, 'cause I don't know, I know a couple of people have submitted them.
Okay.
So if we are, um, voting on CAC applicants, then I would like to include, 'cause I know a couple that have, and I've asked the question about where.
Okay.
They continue to be present and serve, but haven't officially, you know, been, so I think approved.
Was it Mr. Washington, or, that sent the applicants from the CAC committee over our way? And so, who's?
Received them.
Yeah, so they wanted to, so one of the things we talked about, and this is where process comes into play, is that they would, I, I felt that it was necessary for them to review them first and then give them to us to re, to, um, the board to vote upon, so that's how that.
Yeah, and that's our, that's our policy on that, too, yeah.
So, so who was the, who was the liaison then for the GAC?
Um, Ms. Entune, so I can follow up with her, I'll follow up with her to see where, but I know she's asked the same question, um, as to where, where they're going.
Yeah, and so if we get the applications, then we can act on them, if they've been vetted. Um, and then we look through them, and then we can do that, and then we can just work through this process.
But we could do that potentially next week.
If we get them out, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see why that would be a problem, right?
Take care of both of them next week?
If, if we can, I'll, I'll follow up with her and see, yeah.
People waiting to hear.
Well, yeah, but they've been, you know, they've been serving, they just kinda officially been.
All right, okay. Meetings adjourned.